Itu, Iti Katakia.
Fakatakata hau kita uru, fakatakata hau kita tom. Kiamaa kina kina kiuta, kiamaa tara tare kita. Takura, he teo, he huka, he hauhui, hei maori ora.
Well, welcome everybody to the Grants Subcommittee meeting. Please note that the meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube through the Wellington City Council channel. And councillors, please let me or Democracy Services know if you intend to leave the meeting any time. We're going to have morning tea in about an hour. Before that, are there any apologies? Mayor Foster, oh yes, we do have an apology from the mayor. Do I have a seconda for that? Councillor Pannett, great. I now put the motion, all those in favour, press one, and if you're against, press two. That's carried, lovely, thank you. Has anyone got any conflict of interest declarations to make about any item on the agenda? Councillor Phone.
I'm quite excited, this is my first conflict of interest. Yes, I am on the Society of Wellington Waste Managers who have an application in the Waste Minimisation Seed Fund.
Great, okay. Anyone else? No, all right. So confirmation of the minutes, I move the motion that we approve the minutes of the Grants Committee held on the 7th of October. They've been circulated. Do I have a seconda? Thank you, Councillor Day. I'll now put the motion, all those in favour, please press one, if you're against, press two. All right, there aren't any items not on the agenda. So we'll now move on to public participation. And I'd like to invite Rebecca Galloway from New Zealand Opera up to the table. Yes, just there, and you just need to press a button and the light will go on and then you'll be heard. So you've got 10 minutes and feel free to allow some time for questions if you want to.
Fantastic. Shaun, are you arranging the slides? How shall I? Oh. Lovely. Well, Tenakota Katoa, kor Rebecca Galloway, tokuingoa. I'm the philanthropian grants manager at New Zealand Opera. And I'm based here in our Wellington office. I'm really thrilled that you invited me here today. Thank you so much for having me to talk a little bit about what opera can bring to the capital. So we're so grateful for the support that Wellington City Council has given our organisation over the past few years. And I wanted to give you a little insight over just how important Wellington City Council funding is to our operational model. So let's compare with two other national arts organisations, Royal New Zealand Ballet and NZSO. The Royal New Zealand Ballet receives $5.3 million in funding direct from ministry. NZSO receives $14.6 million, again, direct from ministry. We receive at New Zealand Opera $2.6 million and we have to apply through CNZ to get those funds. So to function as a national arts organisation, that funding that we receive from the local authorities in Auckland, Wellington and Christchurch is absolutely crucial. It's not a nice-to-have little pocket of funding, this is central to our organisation. And today I wanted to show you what we're bringing to Wellington over the next year and what we can offer the region in terms of domestic tourism, employment opportunities, attracting talent to the city, community wellbeing and stimulating the local economy. New Zealand Opera is really thrilled to be joining Gardens Magic this summer. We've been working closely with the Wellington City Council events team on this and we're using local singers and a local pianist for the concert. It's a great opportunity to bring opera to thousands of Wellingtonians free of charge and also to activate one of Wellington's public spaces, we're really excited. Another community project that we are bringing to Wellington and indeed the whole country early next year is our annual Opera in Schools tour. Now, every February we pack up a van with a director, a music director, some singers and a very compact set. And we hit the road from Fungarere to Southland. The Wellington schools that we're going to be hitting will probably include Calver Normal School, Pordirua School and Wellington East Girls College. There probably will be others historically, but well, those are yet to be confirmed. So our opera in schools reaches 10,000 or more students around New Zealand every single year. I wanted to talk a little bit about our opera ecosystem in New Zealand. Now, New Zealand Opera is now 20 years old and it came out of a merger of three regional opera companies in Auckland, Wellington and Christchurch. And this merger happened primarily for financial reasons, so that we can ensure a sustainable future for opera in New Zealand. So the health of the sector is still very much top of mind for New Zealand opera. And for our part, we are proactively supporting the regional opera initiatives that are popping up such as Wellington Opera, Toy Toy Opera and Christchurch, both of which are receiving free advertising in our season brochure and also space within our own season launch to advertise their seasons. Let me be really clear about our stance when it comes to other opera companies and initiatives. New Zealand Opera is not interested in competition, we're not interested in fighting for table scraps, we're really all about lifting the sector. That's as we see it, our job as the national opera company, we take the responsibility really seriously. Oh, it just went off, there we are. So The Marriage of Figaro is one of two main scale productions that we're going to be bringing to the capital next year. And it's a work about love, it's a work about gender politics and it's a work about forgiveness. New Zealand Opera has assembled an all-female creative team to create a fresh spin on The Marriage of Figaro, bringing out the feminist themes in Mozart's opera. So we have Lynda Hume directing, Wellingtonian Eleanor Bishop, who some of you might know, she's going to be assistant director. And they're going to be joined by designer Tracy Grant-Lorde and conductor Zoe Zeneody. Additionally, this production of The Marriage of Figaro is going to employ over 100 Wellingtonians, artists, musicians, technicians. And we have a full programme of participation initiatives around this aimed at youth as well as audio description and touch tour for the blind and low vision community. Covid-19 has taught, well, it's taught us many things, taught us many things. But one of the lessons of Covid-19 has been that in order to future-proof our organisation, we need a more comprehensive digital offering. So during the lockdown, we partnered with TVNZ to screen our 2015 production of Tosca over Queen's Birthday weekend. And that broadcast attracted 21,000 views and 9,000 of those were under 50, which is a great result, especially for on a Sunday morning. We also worked with Opera Vision to bring this work to an international audience and on that platform it received 11,500 views, the entire opera. So after the release of Tosca, we realised what an opportunity digital might represent for New Zealand opera. And so we fundraised really hard to capture a semley, our recent production of Handel's Semley. Reached out to Full Winds and NZCT Pub Charity, they gave us some funds to capture this work. And we intend to premiere this new opera film in Wellington in 2021. Morpheus is an exciting new co-production between contemporary dance company Black Grace and New Zealand Opera. It's an example of where we could go with opera. Neil's vision for the work is set in a South Auckland car garage, so we responded by bringing Wellington composer Gareth Farr on board to re-orchestrate Gluck's music, quite possibly to be performed by an all-Pacifica cast. Morpheus will also feature the New Zealand Samoan baritone Benson Wilson in his New Zealand debut. So part of our mission to reimagine opera is about proactively attracting and promoting, developing new creative voices for the art form. So put simply, 624, it's like a start-up approach to creating opera using rapid-fire iterative development. Puts together six teams, each consisting of an opera singer, an instrumentalist, a composer and a writer. And each team is set a task to develop an outline for an imaginary opera that may be commissioned at some point in the future. And 624 has resonated, as we had hoped, across cultures, language, heritage. And we had 110 extremely diverse applications, many of whom were Wellingtonians, and this programme is currently underway. The Unruly Tourists is based on the true story of those badly behaved overseas tourists who were eventually deported from the country, you all remember them. It's a new commission that we're doing from comedy duo The Fan Brigade and New Zealand composer Luke De Soma. And we hope that this work will help unearth a brand-new audience for opera in New Zealand. Now, here's something you might not already know. New Zealand, well, in New Zealand, opera outstrips every other Western art form when it comes to diversity on our stages. Most of our major opera exports are Māori or Pacifica. Think about it, Kiri Te Hanua, Jonathan Lemaloo, Philip Rhodes, Natasha Wilson, Amatai Pate, Penny Pate, Sampson Setu, the list just goes on and on. So our biggest challenge is more around diversification of our audiences and diversification of our productions. So that's what we're really working on hard right now. We've developed a diversity plan with some key milestones to carry us over the next three years, including Tereo classes for all staff in 2021 and high-level collaborations, as you've seen, with Māori and Pacifica companies. You'll start to see some really measurable differences in our programming, in our staff, in our composition of our board across all fields of our organisation. One milestone we've been able to meet earlier than expected was being accepted as one of only three organisations in the country to bring in a Toimāori intern into our organisation. So Afimai Fraser has been working closely with the general director on delivering voices of Ateiroa 624. New Zealand Opera has several different programmes that support artist development and ensure that we continue to punch above our weight when it comes to developing new operatic talent. Each specially tailored programme is several months long and are designed to serve artists at different levels of their career, whether they're singers, repetiteurs, conductors, designers, directors. So you've seen that we have an innovative programme for Wellington coming up. And we really want to bring people together in the capital to enjoy arts experiences together. I guess the thought that I'd like to leave you with is this. Arts events are not the cherry on top, they're the secret sauce. Promoting hospitality spend, generating new jobs, bringing visitors into the, from other centres. And I know that Wellington City Council has a lot on its plate going forward. Big infrastructure costs, earthquake strengthening, the Central Library work. But by investing in the arts and by investing in New Zealand opera, you support the vision for Wellington to be New Zealand's cultural capital. With more funding, we can bring a lot more work to Porneke. And if any of you are interested in knowing more, I personally invite you to our season launch. It's coming up really soon, 10th of December, 6.30 at Public Trust Hall. Meet our team, hear our singers and join us on the journey. Namehi Nui, thank you.
Thank you so much Rebecca, thanks for coming in and you've perfectly used your time, so yeah, we appreciate that, thanks. Exciting stuff. Now, have we got Abigail from Yellow Cat Collective? Yeah, great. Excellent, if you just want to talk into the microphone, that would be great, and sorry, I didn't catch.
So I'm also here with Liz Butler.
Liz, hi.
Yes.
Cool, yeah, so you've got 10 minutes and yeah, feel free to leave some time for questions if you want.
Tenakota Katoa, kor Abigail tokuingoa. Thank you so much for having us here today. We're here to tell you about Yellow Cat Collective, which is a small theatre performing arts company we founded and the show that we've put on, that we're going to be putting on, hopefully with funding from this council.
Yes. Okay, so, oh, okay, cool. So we formed because we wanted to create opportunities for, professional opportunities for ourselves as artists where we could actually make money and actually create the kind of art that we wanted to see. And we weren't seeing many female-led projects. And so we wanted to create those opportunities for ourselves. And also we wanted to have kind of a cross-pollination of art fields because we find that you can really get original work when you're using people with musical backgrounds, like I actually have a background in opera and theatre and Abby has a background in science and dance. And so we wanted to create projects where we could really be collaborators.
Yeah, and we also found it really difficult to find a semi-professional space. So it found, it seemed like there are a lot of people who were amateurs and were operating in an amateur space and putting tonnes of time and money into something that they really loved. And then there are professional fields, mostly people who are coming from classically trained backgrounds. But the stepping stone, especially for people who got into a more professional space when they were a little bit older, was really lacking. So what we're hoping to do with Yellow Cat Collective is create a semi-professional space for amateur, extreme, extreme amateurs to take that next step into a more professional development. So now what we're going to talk about is the specific project that we're going to be working on this year. So we're doing an adaptation of The Yellow Wallpaper, which was a short story by Shirley Perkins-Gilman. I don't know if any of you have read it, so I'll just go really quickly through some of the history of it. So it was written in 1892 and first published in the New England Magazine. It was a seminal work of American feminist literature. And in it, the narrator is suffering from postpartum depression, most likely, it's never named. But instead it's characterised as a nervous hysteria. And she is confined into a house and forbidden from reading, writing, visiting pretty much any activity that brought her joy. And this is, the artist or the writer herself experienced this in her own postpartum depression and it was her reacting to this. And it uses what I think is a really cool literary technique called the unnamed narrator. So the narrator herself is never named, sort of giving her this anonymity. Yes. And so our plan is, we have three different shows we're hoping to put on. The first one is quite soon in March for Fringe 2021 and will be at Inverloki House. The second one is we're partnering with Katherine Mansfield House to put on smaller, more intimate shows. We're also hoping to do some filming. Covid has shown us that you can't rely on public, like in live audiences all the time. And also most of our performers are from overseas, so we really want to give our families the opportunity to see these shows. And we're going to be working with Katherine Mansfield House as well to put on literary panels. Something I'm really excited about is bringing the literary and performing arts worlds together. Obviously, they've been operating together quite a lot, but we have several people on our team who are creative writers themselves and are going to help us host these literary panels. And our final performance, and the first person I talked to is working with Claire Mayby at Verb Festival in 2021. They're putting on an all-feminist themed show. And so that will be our big final performance. And there's a spelling mistake on here, so I'll just point that out when I get to it. Or, yeah, so again, our big push for this project is to create opportunities for emerging artists to increase mental health awareness. So we'll be working with a separate team to help guide in how we can best connect resources for mental health awareness to our programmes. And we'll work those into after our shows, but also the literary panels and to highlight female writers of horror. So we don't have time to introduce everyone from our team today, but I just wanted to get their names on the board since they all couldn't be here. But I just wanted to give you a little bit more of the background for ourselves and how we ended up in this space. So as Liz mentioned, I'm trained as a marine biologist and currently I work in a, as a project manager for a science outreach team called Tokoro Tokori. So that's given me most of my administrative and management experience, which I'm now turning into my arts experience. And in the more artistic sense, I've always worked with physical disciplines. So I've been a physical performer for most of my life and for the past three years, dance has really become my passion.
And I have a degree in theatre and I'm a trained classical singer. And I'm also a professional improviser and improv teacher. So I kind of bring the traditional art sense to the projects that we do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which I'm very grateful for.
And we actually, I think that the two of us are a really great example of what we're trying to do is, you know, allow people to come together with varying degrees of experience and then get the opportunities to work and gain the experience. So then they can be a part of higher caliber projects and get higher roles.
Yeah, and another reason we're asking for so much funding is because we have such a big team. And this is even everyone that we're going to be hopefully employing. We have several more dancers who'll be coming on board, this is sort of just the main logistics team. But again, what we really want to push is creating opportunities for artists to financially support themselves, which again, until you take that step into a professional field and even after that, can be really difficult. So this is a, this is a piece of promotional art that my partner and collaborator Jake Fairweather did for us.
And it represents the project. It is, it is kind of the yellow wallpaper, here's the woman in the walls. And when Abby brought this project to me, I was super stoked because she, her ideas are amazing. But also because it's, this piece was written in 1892 and it's as if nothing has changed. I mean, we're in the global pandemic and the themes of entrapment, isolation, autonomy over one's own body, female voices have never been more relevant. And so the themes are relevant to us, I think, our greater Wellington community and the global community. So this work just serves as a hugely educational and also inspiring piece for us to work through these feelings that we've been going through during the pandemic.
Yeah, and actually, I'd wanted to do something, I first read this story in high school, so about 10 years ago now. And I'd wanted to do something with it almost since then, but then finally we went into lockdown and I was like, oh, this is the time. Like I've connected this story now more than ever. So that's when I first got in touch with Claire and pitched this idea to her and she really loved it. And she was like, but we've got this feminist themed show coming up in two years' time, so hold on to it to then. So that's what we're waiting for and getting excited about. And I also just really briefly wanted to touch on why I think horror is a really cool genre because I know it's something a lot of people don't connect with. But I think horror at its best is a chance for us to explore our darkest fears and things that we all experience in a safe space. So in a, in a good guide to horror, you can sort of help people navigate those spaces collectively and guide them through it and come out safely on the other side. It's sort of like a hero's journey, you get to take people into really scary situations and then help them come out of it. So that's why I think horror is a really cool genre and I think it gets a really bad rep because it's been misused a lot of the time. But we'll have content warnings and debriefs after each show to help people navigate this space together. And so finally, thank you, and I did just want to leave a few moments for questions if you had any.
Yeah, are there any questions? Councillor Phone.
Just thank you for coming in to present today and I really love your print on your outfit. So will that also be for sale as merch?
Yeah, there will be amazing merch.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you so much, I also have to run to work, so I'm going to head out.
Oh, hang on, we've got some more questions.
Oh, yeah.
If you don't, if you need to go there, that's fine.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, Councillor Day and then Councillor Pannett, if we've got time.
Fine, just a quick one, thank you for coming to call it all about this. How has your collective grown, like how have you sort of pulled people in?
So we actually.
Is there the opportunity for more people to join you?
Yeah, so we actually just started. After we got, well, after we got permission from Claire to move ahead with this, we just started to sort of mostly pay people because we both have, we both pay American taxes still. So nothing can pass through our bank account, which I think you know, nothing can pass through a personal bank account. So the push for us to start this collective was to get more opportunities for funding. And then we're hoping to bring more people into our shows as we grow. But again, I don't want to take anyone on that we can't pay, so.
One of the, one of the ways we are gaining people is what you've seen, we're holding our shows at art spaces, like the Inverloki Art School and the Katherine Mansfield House. And through those different spaces, that attracts other people. And that's, it's like a cross-pollination of groups.
Cool, and Councillor Pannett.
Thank you very much, just a quick question, if we don't give you the money, have you got other ideas for getting it?
So we've, we are applying for Creative New Zealand funding. Through until after the Fringe show, so this funding would really sort of help us get on our feet and do the development process for the Fringe show. And then hopefully the Creative New Zealand funding can kick in after and that will help us with the Katherine Mansfield and the Verb show. We're also going to make a big push for crowdfunding. But in my experience, that works best when you've already got some content to share. And so in my ultimate financial plan, crowdfunding would kick in again after our Fringe show when we've got more content we can sort of advertise with and hopefully make a Patreon and share as well.
Cool, thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Now can I invite Simon Dodd? Hey Simon, come up to the table.
I'm from Regenerate.
Cool, you know the drill, yeah?
I'd like to introduce.
Lovely, thanks.
And Dan, who's one of us.
Adam and Dan, hey, have a seat.
Can we connect to the screens?
Uh, yep, we should be able to organise that.
Yep.
Maybe you might want to start and we'll get, or does?
I was kind of going to go through presentations.
Okay.
If we can just.
Sure.
This to screen somehow and I'll just talk to it. Sorry.
Thanks, Simon.
Hi everybody, so my name's Adam, thank you for taking the time to speak with us today. I must confess, I've been a little bit nervous, so if I stutter a little bit, please don't bear with me, please. So basically, one of the aims of the Social Recreation Fund is to improve the safety, wellbeing and connectedness of Wellington residents. So an obvious question is, who are the most vulnerable people in Wellington? Now, I'm sure you all know what the NZDEP studies are, but for anybody who doesn't, every time there's a census, there's a group of researchers at the University of Itagao, they sign a deprivation score, deprivation index to every area across the country. The more, the higher your deprivation score or index, the more deprived you are. Now you can see from the heat map there that Wellington is actually quite an affluent TA. It's not got the problems that Wiro or Gisborne has, for instance. However, it does have pockets of high levels of deprivation, particularly around Berenpor, Kilburne, Strathmoor Park. So my point is, if you're trying to answer that question. So my point is, if you're trying to answer that question, who are the most vulnerable people in Wellington? If you're going to look at this from a geographic perspective, then it's Wellington's urban poor that are actually the most vulnerable. Um, and potentially that's where funds should be, be channeled. Now, again, it's no surprise to anybody that Wellington is going through a bit of a housing crisis at the minute. The graph at the top there is showing you uh annual rent in, sorry, average rent in Wellington versus Auckland. You can see in Wellington, it's now above Auckland. Uh, and a similar trend is going to occur pretty soon with, if house prices continue in the same way. So at the same time, as you've got a booming housing market, which is causing problems for people at the bottom end of the market, you've also got increase in joblessness. So between uh March 2020 and September 2020, the number of people on Jobseeker Support in Wellington increased by 39%. Now, it doesn't take a genius to work out that if you've got a booming housing market that's causing problems at the bottom end of the market and you've got increased joblessness, well, that's going to fuel homelessness. Now, almost by definition, there's no good data on the level of people who are homeless anywhere, basically. However, if you spoke to any service provider, DCM, Orange Sky, uh Night Shelter, Soup Kitchen, they'll all tell you that they're seeing an increase in homelessness. In fact, all you need to really do is walk down Courtney Place on a rainy day. This is actually why I got involved with Regenerate in the first place. I moved to Wellington in 2016, walked down Courtney Place and it surprised me a little bit, the amount of people that were homeless and actually living on the street there. Anyway, how can Regenerate Magazine help? Well, we're a charitable trust that is dedicated to providing working opportunities to people affected by homelessness and poverty. We've got an operational model that is very similar to the big issue in the UK. So basically what happens is if you're affected by homelessness or poverty, you can come and work for us as a Regenerate seller. We'll give you a stack of eight magazines. You sell those for $5 each. For every one you sell, you get to keep 250 of that and then 250 comes back to us to help cover the costs. So basically printing the magazine and, and keeping the whole thing going. Now, originally we had a team, a small team of volunteers who were distributing these stacks of magazines out to people. Now it's being done by team leaders such as the guy on my right here, he's going to speak to you in a moment. What are our objectives? Well, um, first of all, to support and empower sellers by providing them with purposeful activity and a means to acquire income. What has actually surprised me since starting with Regenerate Magazine is that it's actually the most important thing is providing people with purposeful activity. Obviously, a lot of the people that we deal with have addiction issues, but when they come to work with us, they're sober. It's giving them something to do. It's giving them something that's purposeful and meaningful. Now, you can, you know, I'm sure that they can make just as much money sitting on the street with a sign out. However, doing that, you don't get the sense of pride and the sense of self-respect that you get from actually having a, a, a job basically to turn up to and, and work at. Uh, we also look to connect sellers with local agencies who provide support, counselling and advocacy services. We provide wraparound support in terms of food and accommodation when required. I've got to say, we do more in kind of food than we do accommodation because simply we don't have anywhere to put people, although Simon has had people sleeping on his floor uh every now and again. We also want to invest in our sellers to help them develop uh in a personal and professional capacity and help them gain full-time employment. So how does this fit in with the objectives of the Social Recreation Fund? Well, in a sentence, uh, Regenerate Magazine is helping some of the most vulnerable uh Wellington residents. It's, it's hard to think of anybody who is actually more vulnerable than people who are living on the street. And in terms of your recovery priorities of, um, I think we hit those fairly well. So I've listed in blue there, so all, all those are taken directly from the S and R fund. Um, website, anything in blue is something that I believe we hit. So for instance, uh, reducing homelessness and rough sleeping, obviously we're helping out in that space. Mental health, wellbeing and meaningful activities. Again, meaningful activities is kind of the primary thing that, that we actually do, I, I feel. Um, assisting supporting the country's, uh, the city's most vulnerable people. Again, yeah, we're hitting that. Supporting a housing-first approach to homelessness, not sure if we're hitting that or not, but I colored it blue anyway. Um, strengthening local community wellbeing, yeah, I believe we're hitting that. And this is a community enterprise. This is something that Wellingtonians are getting behind. We have people writing articles for us. We have people uh doing artwork for us. And obviously all the sellers, they actually produce their own poems and stories that actually go into the magazine. Now, some uh success stories. So here are some pictures of people that have worked with us um over the course of the, the last few years since we've been operating. Uh, all the names you see in there are all pseudonyms, they're not real names. Uh, some of the people have been uh kind of blocked out, so you can't actually see them, so it doesn't cause any problems.
I'm the first one at the top.
That defeats the point of anonymizing it.
I can be grumpy.
Yeah, you can. Um, and it's, these, these are some of the people that we've worked with. These are what, who we call our core teams. So these are people that we're working with currently on a week in, week out basis. These are people who since joining with us have gone from being homeless to being housed. Now, we can't take um credit for that, it's complete credit for that. Obviously, you know, it's DCM, it's the um housing in New Zealand that are, that are doing that. However, we are telling our guys when they come to us, these are what your options are, these are the organizations you should contact. Um, and I would hazard a guess that if you were to pick 30 homeless people randomly and I look at how many of them have been housed, I would doubt you'd get nearly a third that have. So I feel we're having some kind of positive uh impact there. Again, in terms of employment, our best success stories actually occur when we don't see the guys again. For instance, people, uh, there's one guy there who, he was down on his low key, started to work with Regenerate for a little while, then got a job as a bus driver. He's now, as far as I know, he's working as a bus driver, but we never see him again. Okay, Simon still has relationships with us. So again, we, we've managed to see a lot of the guys that have worked with us are now in employment and that, that's basically our, our biggest success story. Now, I was going to go through, um, so this is a guy, Alan, again, it's a pseudonym. Uh, very, very quickly, Alan was made homeless, lived on the street for five years, basically lived under a bridge in a tent. Um, he has very, very low self-esteem, or at least he did when he started, he wouldn't say, kind of booed to a goose. Uh, he's come on with us and slowly he's been interacting with the public more. You can see him gaining in confidence and in May this year, he was actually housed. So after being on the street for five years, he's now in a, in a home. He's working for the magazine and he's also doing some um voluntary work at a local charity store. So you can see that he's taking positive steps in his life. However, the guy that we're kind of most proud of is actually the guy sat to our right here. Uh, Dion or Dan, as he talked, called himself uh a, a minute ago.
Dion?
Yeah, we put you down as Dion.
Dan.
That's your pseudonym. However, you know, Dan is now working as uh one of our team leaders. I'll let him explain kind of what he does and his interaction with the, the organization.
Well, I'm not Dion, I'm Dan. But uh now I've got a pseudonym, so now I've learned something today. But um, this is pretty much what we do.
Dan, could you explain uh what you do as team leader?
So what, what I do as team leader is um, I assist the other staff members and give them equipment and magazines and, and support and services to help them get on with the things they need to help, need help with. And um encouraging, teach and support them into a position that they can get, get confident enough to actually go out there and work amongst the people. And actually, um, some people are, are very self-conscious and they've got a bit of an idiosyncrasy. They're very afraid to be amongst people and they're scared to be amongst others. But slowly I can bring them up and support them and they can get the confidence that they need to um actually physically work amongst others. And uh, and, and it breaks them down and their barriers get lessened and they can get the confidence they need and they can work amongst other people. But um, it's not just the, the staff members that I'm involved with, it's actually the members that we need to help support and the people that literally like Simon and Adam said, that need to be taken out of the gutter. And as he's told, they're, they're not stupid and useless. They've got a second chance, you know, help people as much as we can. But there's just so many problems, it's almost uncountable. It's just, but you've got to work with an individual as an individual. You can't just put everyone in one big bucket and say, oh, it's all solved.
Thanks, Dan, we've had uh 10 minutes.
It takes a long time, you know, to develop this type of relationship. And on the 29th of last month, we were three years old, but because of the stupid lockdown, we couldn't have a birthday party and it like last.
All right, thanks, thanks, Dan. And, and Adam and Simon for coming in. And um, yeah, thank you for the work that you do across Wellington. Cheers.
Do you have any questions or?
Uh, we've actually run out of time for questions, but thanks, yeah, thanks so much for coming in. It was very useful to hear directly from you. Cheers. I'd now like to invite Graham Clark up from um Trades, Wellington Trades Hall. You know the drill, Graham.
I'm not sure I do.
Oh, well, you've got 10 minutes and if you'd like to, all right.
I can, I can see that.
All right, it's like the Supreme Court.
I'm Graham Clark. I'm the president of Wellington Trades Hall. Um, Wellington Trades Hall is uh probably the most uh prominent place in New Zealand trade union history. Uh, and it will soon be a category one heritage building. Uh, it's already on the Wellington City Council Heritage List. Um, in the 1990s, there was a theory that it would be knocked over to make way for State Highway One. And that led the building to go into a bit of decline. Um, that never happened. And eventually the unions that were in the hall took over its running. Uh, and as a result of that, um, a number of things have been done to improve it. So we have earthquake strengthened, uh, and um we intend to keep on uh carrying out the work to improve the building. Uh, and as part of that, we've decided to create a museum in parts of the building that currently have no uh use, which is the building's foyer, which is quite a large area. Uh, and gradually devote more of the building to a celebration of um trade union and working class um history in New Zealand. Um, so all of this has taken a lot of money and um we're in debt and we've run out. And uh, we want to have the museum up and running by next year. And there's a couple of things that um we thought that we might be able to get a bit, bit of help from you guys with. Um, I don't have the overhead projector chart, so I've bought in a couple of bits of paper. And um, I didn't quite know the numbers, so I've only done six. Um, we're working on displays of a number of um things. So uh, there's one um about the actual opening of the building, which was the subject of a four-day um gala in 1928. Um, there's one about the Eight Hour Day, which um arose from the first Labor Day in Wellington, celebrated in 1890, before it was a public holiday, which was a plaque um of um uh with the bust of Samuel Duncan Parnell, who founded the Eight Hour Day in 1840. Um, we have other displays um which are being developed. And these relate to two that um we need some financial assistance for. Uh, the top one is, that you have is um a look at, on the first picture of the uh display relating to Toby Hill. And you can see that there's a TV screen there. The bottom one is part of a display on the Spring, Anti-Springbok Tour protests. So next year is the 40th anniversary of those protests. And we're trying to create a display which marks the union involvement in those protests. As part of that, we wish to have a television screen that people can come in, um, turn on and watch a um audio visual which ties the various elements of the display together. So some of the things that we have in this display already are a 1948 um publication by the um New Zealand Transport Worker opposing sporting contact with South Africa. So most people think that our position to sporting contact started in 1960, but in fact it started in the union movement in 1948. Also, we have a mannequin dressed in the body armor that was created after the battening of demonstrators in Molesworth Street. Uh, we have a police long baton and a police short baton that the police um have graciously given to us. And um a picture that was donated by Alec Shaw that was created of Red Squad. So where the picture is on the um photo that you have is where we want to put the TV screen. And the hope is that um the audio visual display will tie the different elements of the display together and explain to people exactly what it is they're looking at. Uh, the second thing we want to do is to create a quite a large painting, at least a metre by a metre. And that's the second um item that you see there. That's a picture of um the police battening relief workers in Cuba Street in 1932. Um, there was meant to be a meeting in the Trades Hall of um unemployed relief workers. And when 2,000 turned up, it was too many to fit in the hall. So they went to a vacant paddock. I didn't know we had those in Wellington even in 1932, but a vacant paddock in Cuba Street and had their meeting. And the police decided, because of what had happened the day before when they'd marched on Parliament, that they weren't going to allow the meeting to take place. And they sent in uh mounted police and foot police with battens to break up the meeting. Um, as a result of that, many were injured and they were all treated in the um hall of uh the, the Trades Hall foyer. Um, a prominent Labour Party activist said it looked like a military field dressing station. So we have an artist who's done some portraits of people who've died um in uh trade union service um through violence. Uh, and she has undertaken uh to um create the painting, a replica of the um picture that you see before you. There may be a couple of little adaptations of the picture, so it won't be just a straight copy of it. Um, we intend, for example, to include um a chap by the name of Bill Gillespie, whose daughter wound up working in Trades Hall. But Bill Gillespie said that one of the proudest moments of his life was when he tipped a policeman off his horse um during that demonstration. So we want to include those little bits of history in the painting. Uh, the idea behind the museum that we have is simply to um get more people to come in and learn about New Zealand working class history, uh, trade union history. It has a very proud and long and strong history. We're not perhaps doing as well as we used to, but if more people learn about it, we might do better. So I'll leave you with some time for questions. I always like to be brief.
Excellent, thanks, Graham. Um, I see lots of nodding around the table, but are there any questions? Yeah, Tam.
God, thanks for that, very, very inspiring. Um, as a young person, good to know that history. Um, look, this is a pretty basic question, but it says at the bottom here, there were, on the caption of the Cuba Street photo, there were fierce clashes between union members, scabs, police and, what's a scab?
Strike breaker. Someone who um uh sells out his fellow workers and works for the employer while the rest are on strike.
A pertinent question. Um, Counselor Penne.
Um, thank you, Graham. I spent many happy hours in Trades Hall in the 90s, as did Counselor Fohn. Um, and that's my question. Um, because we were part of the environmental wing and the, the anarchists were there and the animal, um, animal rights people as well. So at some point, will there be a, a bit of a reflection on um that history as well, do you think?
Uh, yes, I mean, we, we try to use, um, to give the space in Trades Hall, if it's not occupied by a union, uh, to progressive organizations. So the environmentalists are still there. Um, we have a, a filmmaker who, uh, we have two filmmakers actually, but one who does um documentaries and he'll be doing the film work um on the Springbok Tour. Um, yeah, so um it's not exclusively um going to be union oriented, um, the, the future of the building. And um my, one of my hopes is, is that the trade union movement will make a greater contribution in the environmental area and that we'd be commenting about activities undertaken by unions in that space as well.
Awesome. And can I just say thank you for earthquake strengthening your building? It's a great contribution to the city.
Well, we, we hope to be doing more of that, but we've got to pay off our debt first.
Yeah, I just have a question, Graham. Can you tell us about the um, the exhibition you're planning for the commemoration of the 40 years since the 1981 tour? What, and what are you sort of looking at, at getting for that tour? What kind of discussions are you with, with activists of that time?
Um, I've spoken to one or two people. Um, Alec Shaw has undertaken, because he was the chief marshal as well as later becoming deputy mayor of Wellington. Um, he has undertaken to do the commentary um on the um audio visual display. Um, what we have is currently a number of photos that we want to reproduce um of union involvement in demonstrations. Um, we have uh the long and short baton, we have the painting, we have the piece. We have the long and short baton, we have the painting, we have the piece from the New Zealand Transport Worker and we have a mannequin that we've dressed in the body armour that was created. What happened in Molesworth Street when the police used their battens, hitting people over the head, there was a lot of blood and a lot of injury. And so the demonstrators created body armour out of jandals on your shoulders to keep your collarbones intact, helmets to keep your head intact, rolled up newspapers with taped your legs as shin pads and then a chest protector was made. The police moved from short battens, I only discovered this in asking them to be given one, to long battens because long battens left less visible injuries. It was the short battens that caused a lot of blood and so they wanted to get rid of those and hit people in a way that didn't show. So the body armour was created to stop that and a lot of people don't know about these sorts of aspects of life in New Zealand under Sir Robert Maldoun.
Yeah, no, very important lessons there. Thank you so much, Graham, and thanks for coming in today. I've got Bobby Lloyd and Sarah Buher from Reusable Bowl. Got a strong advocate here.
Perfect, I'll hand a few around anyway.
Thanks very much for coming in and if you just make sure your microphone's on and then you've got 10 minutes if you want to leave some time for questions within that. Thank you.
This microphone working?
When you're ready.
Sounds good. Hello, everyone.
Kia ora, everyone. I'm Bobby Lloyd.
And I'm Sarah Buher.
And we are reusable, the ones that you have in your hand. It's reusable packaging for takeaway food. We exist to design out waste in Aotearoa and beyond by replacing single use alternatives with reusable alternatives powered by the circular economy. Waste is a huge issue, especially in Wellington with our landfill filling up pretty quickly with estimations of three to four years at current projections. But what a big problem becomes a big opportunity and we think it's a really big opportunity for Wellington especially to lead the way in waste free alternatives and become a zero waste city. So we are introducing reusable as a way to get there. Sarah will talk about how it works.
So imagine you walk into your favourite restaurant downstairs, you're running out for lunch and you don't have time to dine in. So you're like, ah, look at that amazing option, I can borrow a bowl with my food instead of creating packaging waste. So you would go in, order your food, ask for it in a reusable, put a deposit down to borrow that bowl and then go away and have it, enjoy the food. And then you can bring it back to any restaurant that offers reusable to get a refund or swap it with your next meal. And then that restaurant actually takes it and washes it, very similar to the Again Again way that they wash the crockery. And then, excuse me, and so in that respect, they can then get it ready and fully sanitized and loaned to the next customer. So the way we make money is the eateries actually pay a subscription to stock the packaging. So we're essentially a packaging supplier with a reusable option. And the product itself is actually made out of rice husk, so it's fully plastic free, which was one of the values we wanted to include in our product. And we've worked with restaurant owners and customers over the past year, interviewing lots of people out on the street, talking to them about what they want to see. And we feel like this product actually solves not only the waste issue, but more importantly, a really big product problem with packaging. Like it's flimsy, it leaks, it spills, people are kind of settling because there's nothing better. And so it's an opportunity there to just make a better experience frankly and empower restaurants to offer something better for their customers and attract new customers too.
I thought I'd briefly talk about a little bit about us and why we're doing it. I'm from Wellington originally, born and bred here, so it's quite important work for me. I returned here last year, at the start of last year, after a little bit of time away, and have been a sustainability consultant with the hospitality industry and other sectors, fashion and construction. And have kind of worked a lot with waste free initiatives, especially around hospitality. I regularly meet with Laurie here and have met with Tomatha before on Climathon and other things that I'm working on. So it's a really, really big passion for me to work towards this and along the way have met Sarah.
Yeah, and I'm from the United States originally, which you can probably tell. But I now call Wellington home, I've been here about five years and studied at University of Whakata about 10 years ago, so it's been a journey. But I worked in corporate advertising for almost a decade and then became acutely aware that I was part of the problem, selling fast moving consumer goods. So decided, how can I do something instead that takes my skills in brand and marketing and advertising and move it into something that is positive for the world and not causing the destruction that I saw while travelling? So I went to Climathon, the startup weekend, and that's actually where reusable started. And then met Bobby shortly afterwards and then we were into the zero carbon challenge. So definitely have received council support along the way. And through that and the seed money that we got from it, from a crowdfunding campaign, is what we were able to use to produce the bowls you see in front of you. So that covered just that product cost. And so now this next phase and the phase we're in is, we're on a mission to expand it to 30 eateries because we're actually live in four at the moment. So we launched in August with four eateries because we were able to produce this product. So we're at Taste of Home, Pickle and Pie, Mr Goes and Fixin' Fog right now. And we've seen amazing traction. I think in just two months, we had over 2,000 pieces of single use waste eliminated and over 700 people engaged in the system. And we received a lot of sign up inquiries of people that are really wanting to, of eateries that are wanting to sign up. So yeah, this is the moment that we're getting the funding to produce more stock, increase our runway and expand to 30 eateries early next year and then aim is 50 to 100 by end of next year.
Yeah, and at that point, our business model was self sustaining. So this is the opportunity for us to, and the council, to help us get to that point really. Not only is it 10,000 products, but it's the opportunity for one, each product reduces 100, well, can be used over 150 times. And so 10,000 products that we'll produce with this money has a potential to eliminate 1.5 million items of waste over their life. So this is just a small generative way. So this $20,000, $25,000 is a small kind of kick to get us to that point. It also, every time somebody uses one of these, they're choosing a sustainable option and then that helps them maybe think about other sustainable options in their life. Our surveys have shown that others are thinking about ways they get to work, other reusable items in their life, eliminating waste in other areas. So it's a really big behaviour change and sustainable behaviour change that they can do every day in a really simple and easy way.
Yeah, so essentially we have a little bit of private funding already committed and this 25 would get us to that next step, to be able to produce the minimum order quantity, that 10,000 he talked about, increase that runway and actually make that March goal is when we'd like to expand to that 30 eateries. So this would enable that directly. And in the end of your printout, you'll see a couple quotes from our customers and we'll put it up on the screen. But yeah, so don't take it just from us, but hopefully you can try reusable.
Cool, thank you so much. And we do have a couple of questions, councillor Matthews.
Yeah, kia ora, kouro. I'm very excited, you know, because I feel like this, I mean, we kind of do this, you know, now I've, you know, I'm probably about five years in on a keke cup all of the time. And I, you know, and I think a lot of people now do this. So, you know, this is a great continuation of that. And I guess my question is, what information do you have that people are using it, you know, just to go to any place? And because I sometimes will take, if I remember, I'll, you know, I've got my thing for when I go and get a smoothie, I take my own container when I go and get sushi, those kind of things. So people are using them just to go anywhere.
Yeah, we have found that during our pilot, but we kind of understand because we only have four places. So even I'm wanting to expand the network a little bit, get different types of food. So the main, we've actually found about 70% repeat users at our places because we only have data for the places that we're operating with. But we've seen high repeat and like correct usage in the system and the resounding feedback we've gotten from people is just, when are you going to open it to more places? So I think the bold, like 1% of people that already brought their own containers are taking it elsewhere, which we like because it's kind of like guerrilla bowl marketing. But yeah, but we are seeing that people are using it correctly.
It's part of our, it's, yeah, like you're saying guerrilla bowl marketing, it's part of our sales strategy because they're quite noticeable. So as soon as someone brings them in, they're already aware and then we can follow that up.
Councillor Day and then councillor Foon.
So my question is, living out in the suburbs, I've observed that the takeaways in suburbs are almost the worst as far as producing, like, you know, as a family, if you get a whole lot of takeaways, you get about five plastic containers. And I'm wondering if you would consider having a look at that because actually in some ways, when I look at the comparison, like city takeaways, they're doing better as far as using paper kind of options or cardboard options. But the suburbs are just way back in the dark ages. And I wonder if you'd consider that and whether it's worth contacting some of our business groups, so there's business improvement districts who might help you.
Yeah.
You might get a different sort of uptake and...
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, absolutely. One of our next steps, and we're already in contact with Deliver Easy about delivery. So we want to work with another local company first and work with them to enable that because we see that as the huge next step. The first, most easiest and visible step for us is office workers at lunchtime. But then, yeah, definitely, definitely out there because we do see that as a huge problem too.
Yeah, and we're actually, we've already made some product design changes to these, so.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, incompetence, just kidding.
If you see, just to make it more stackable and a bit more, these are 3D printed versions of the next product, but it's effectively the same, same volume, but it just stacks better because those ones didn't stack.
So it was stackability that we've already made that change from the pilot and the lid fitting even tighter. So we're aiming for like fully spill proof specifically for that delivery move. Yeah, so we've made the design changes, we just need the funds to produce them basically.
Exciting, thank you.
Yeah, but great, great question. I think we actually got a couple of emails from people in the hut who were really interested.
And councillor Foon, just a quick question.
Yeah.
Just commercially, apart from doing good, what is the incentive for our hospitality industry to want to use reusable?
Yeah, great question.
So we have two reasons. Once they get to a certain percentage of their packaging sold in reusable, they'll start saving money. So they'll start saving money on the single use packaging. At an average takeaway restaurant, that's about 20% in our packaging. So it's an incentive to push up to at least that level. And then outside of that, one of our eateries, the one that you see up there, he actually outlines, Steve from Taste of Home, outlines that it reaches a small but important market that didn't actually eat there before because they're majority takeaway. He has witnessed 150 new customers each week to his restaurant. So that means that they're broadening their customer base basically with our product.
Yeah, and for hospitality specifically, what we've heard resoundingly is that customer loyalty is really important, like they want to keep, get and keep loyal customers and our system kind of enables people to keep bringing it back.
And recognise those loyal customers just through that, yeah.
Thank you so much for coming in and very interesting and great to have the props. Very good.
Thank you all.
Thanks for having me.
I wish we could leave the bowls with you, but if you don't sell them, you'll be borrowed.
Yeah, Laurie keeps that one.
Cool, and is Millie here? Oh, no. It's all right.
Millie has gone probably for a COVID test.
Oh, no, no, no problem at all.
Oh, I'm Caroline O'Reilly.
Caroline, hey, how's it going?
It's going fine. Yeah, we only heard about an hour ago. So I've come along instead of Millie. So I actually run Vinnies Reso, because I've met Jill before and I'm Laurie. So how do I plug in a...
Oh, we'll help you out.
Okay. And I will, in the meantime, I'll pass these around. Oh, right, there we go. Okay, so I'm the coordinator of Vinnies Reso. First of all, I'm going to tell you a bit about Vinnies because I don't know if you know much about what Vinnies do. There's a lot of misconception. So Vinnies is national, it's run by different conferences, so tiny little parishes, mainly retirees, they're funded by donations or they're funded by shops in their particular area. They're not funded by national. So national office is just an administration office, they might give some support for IT, they may give some support for HR documentation, but that's about all. They don't actually run their own projects and they don't fund any projects. We pay 5% of our income from our shops to fund the rest of those IT and HR issue things for the rest of the organisation across New Zealand. So we, Wellington, are the biggest office. We have about 29 employees and we run nine shops, which fund the following provisions up on the board. So we have a choice based food bank, which means that people, it's basically like a little mini supermarket, people can come in and choose what they want to eat rather than being given a box of food that they might not actually use for their own culture. We have a social worker who works with people, works closely with wins. People come in and they'll have counselling, they'll get help with immigration, all the domestic violence, bit of budgeting, et cetera. We have pregnancy assistance that gives free packs, including cots, baby buggies, prams, to women who are expecting babies and it goes up to one year old. So they support them, nappies as well. We have a supported employment programme. We basically have seven or eight people who have learning difficulties and they are employed to make altar breads, which we sell across the country. We don't make any profit out of that. That basically is there to give employment to people with learning difficulties. And then finally, the last project that came on board about three years ago is Vinnies Reso. Vinnies Reso is a project which works with people in the community. So for many day, you'll see in the documentation that I gave you, it's a little snapshot of our day. And basically, we might have people who are refugees, unemployed, mental health corrections, school leavers, people with, people with learning difficulties who are actually in school and they come for work experience, immigrants, you name it, people come to Reso. And they come, not mainly to Reso, they come to integrate themselves into the community because a lot of them are new people into Wellington or they might be people who have lost their jobs and so they don't, they've lost their purpose. So they come and they make things for the community or they make things for their families. They also, we have a lot of people who come for work experience, so they might not ever touch a sewing machine. They might do Trade Me to help fund their project, they may do marketing, they may do social media. I look at every individual and I find their strength and then they work to that and that gives them experience that they can put on their CV. So in terms of funding at the moment for the whole organisation, the main funding comes from our 79% from our op shops. That's remaining static at the moment. Obviously, we did lose a lot of income when we had COVID and we were closed. 4% is sundry, 8% or 0.8% is fundraising and that might be food bank, we go out to food banks, we do book sales, we do fabric sales, et cetera. 3%, 3.2% is donations from the general public. We did get 9.2% COVID wage subsidy and we also got 4.9% grants for the food bank solely to buy food because we had a 300% increase during COVID. We remained, we were an essential service and we have now generally a 180% raising our services requirements. And then the other is 2.5% from altar breads. Vinnies Reso, actually, we don't sell anything mainly because the people that come to Reso, there are only a few out of probably the 35 to 40 people that come regularly, who are able to produce the quality of goods that could be sold. One of those is a guy who was recently made redundant from IT and he solely does any contracts that we get for payments. So we recently made some gowns for Southern Cross because they couldn't go out to China and get them in time, so we made them those. We made the Art Access Bags, which we get Koha. So sometimes we get a bit of Koha for projects that we do, but on the whole, most of the things that we do, we do for free. And I've got an example, so over the last, since July, so this financial year, we've made over 7,476 items for our Vinnies projects for free. So we don't, they sort of like an invisible cross charge. So we don't, they sort of like an invisible cross charge. And then for other organisations for free or for a small Koha, we've made over 3,725 pounds, dollars worth of items that we've given to them that they would have had to pay for if they'd gone out to wholesalers. But we've done it for free. So it's an inclusive sewing studio, as I've said, it's based in Kilkenny, it's been there since 2017. And we offer meaningful projects for the community and charity organisations. We work with anybody and everybody, we give a lot of fabrics as waste free. So one of our main drivers is sustainability, so all the fabrics that we use aren't purchased. They are either repurposed from old clothing or they're donations that are fabric stashes that would be ending up in landfill. We take it in, wash it and then we repurpose it. We work with lots of different community groups across Wellington to find really interesting projects. So one of those including that is Suffragette Stitches, which was at Wellington Museum and was global. And that gave people the opportunity to get to work with people they wouldn't normally work with in the community and get used to working in a museum with curators and professional people. The outcome of that project was that one of our girls who, a Mari lady, who had been unemployed for a long, long time, felt quite, her self-confidence was very low, but she got so much respect from the curators that she ended up going to Porirua College and doing a weaving course. And now she's actually doing that as a living. She's doing keté and cloaks and so, I mean, it's amazing what it can do when you work with individuals to get their confidence up. It's safe and inclusive, it breaks down a lot of barriers. So we get people who come in who have fear of, you know, other different communities, they're not like themselves or with people with disabilities. And within a week, you see people, you know, they'll be, oh, go and get Caroline to help you. So a Muslim lady, go get Caroline to help you. And then a week later, she'll be saying, oh, no, I'll help you. So it's really good for breaking those barriers down and creating this community space where people feel safe. People end up coming and they, they can't sew, but within about six months, they're actually teaching other people to sew. So we've had people then consider actually going and doing teaching qualifications and mentoring other people in the community. One person who came has now taken her justice of peace, she's got that, and she's now actually been asked to go for a judges course. So that's all in three years, you know, people move along as they come in, they drop in, they come for a couple of months, they go do something else and they come back and they may spend another couple of months. We get a lot of students who go off to AUT, do their business course, once come back and he's now doing some business planning for us. And he'll be using that in his first, second year of his business course. And it's great to see them working with people because they then get an understanding of people with mental health issues, with disabilities. So when they go back into the workforce, they're going to be much more empathetic to people who might not be like them. So obviously, they learn new skills and work experience. A good example this year, this week is I've already done two cover letters, two support letters, reviewed a CV and written, helped write draft cover letters as well for two people who are going for jobs. We've had a significant increase of people, especially women coming in, who have actually lost their job for COVID. And they are supporting, you know, single parents with four children. So this week I've managed to get six swimming passes for free and also connect them to Newtown Community Centre so that during the summer holidays, they can get onto the summer holiday programme. So it's much more than sewing. It is a group that networks and keeps people connected to their communities and if they're new to New Zealand, integrated into their communities. Because we get a lot of women as well who are coming and men who come on their partnerships work visas and they're trying to find work, but in this, they're not getting it, they're not getting it. So they've got somewhere safe to come and to meet new friends and talk about their problems and how they feel about being here and also to navigate their way through.
Thank you, we've come to the end of your time, but thank you so much. You've even inspired me to look at sewing again, that was great, thank you, thank you very much for coming in.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions or?
Sorry, we've run out of time for questions, sorry about that. But if you want to stick around, we're about to break from morning tea, so it may well be that people come along and have a chat. So yeah, we'll just break now from morning tea for, I think, quarter of an hour. We'll just come back just before 11. Thanks, everyone.
The first item is the Waste Minimisation Seed Fund and I'll hand over to councillor Foon to introduce the report and move it.
Great, feeling slightly distracted today, one of those days, but as usual, it is always an exciting time of year. It's a shame that it only really comes around once a year, but we have the Waste Minimisation Seed Fund today, so I'm bringing that report to the table. I am very excited. Just want to thank our team for the work they've done. I know they know these projects intimately and I'm glad that it's not me at the decision-making part there, so good on them for their work. But I do want to acknowledge the projects that they're bringing in, that they are suggesting that we support today. So Allheart is a diversion of corporate waste to organisations that need it and hopefully we'll be able to look at 300 tonnes a year. But we're also getting a really great value as this partnership is also supported by MFE. So think about it as kibosh for other stuff. I think that's a really good way, that they are actually the system that helps divert it and it is commercially better because it's helping those organisations that want to do the right thing to save time. Why Waste is another one. It's a subscription-based wormery, I love that wormery, which has had great success in Toorongga and Auckland, is also launching in Dunedin. But as we know, as we saw in the survey that was done recently on waste minimisation, people are really keen to pay for solutions in this space. And while we have many organisations that are really trying to work with the organic resource, this is another way that people can do or get involved or make a commitment. Also, local business who is operating on a national scale, it was great to be in Auckland and see refills, stickers all throughout Christchurch, sorry, Christchurch Airport, but they've got a campaign, also government-supported, called Drink Differently, which will be part of a national campaign to support people to ditch the single-use bottle and refill your water bottle instead. Like that? Great. And also, as we heard from Reusable today, who are, you know, zero-carbon and Climathon graduates, they're really helping people to choose a sustainable option. And I think we can all see that Wellington, in its small, compact space with a great hospitality industry, is a really great place to become a city of reuse and really promote reuse systems. And as councillor Nicola Young says, when you go to some German cities, you wouldn't expect, you just get handed a reuse system. So while we think we're innovating, we still actually have got a long way to go. I do want to acknowledge the work of the Formary, who have been really working hard on doing an incredible job, but we're progressing other ways that we can support that. And also just want to acknowledge all of the other community-based organisations who are doing such great mahi to help reduce waste. And I can't yet enthuse enough about what an amazing community we've got in Wellington, who are really showing great leadership in this space. So while it would be great to help them all, I think we've got some really great outcomes today. So with that, I'll move the paper and councillor Matthews will be seconding today.
Councillor Matthew.
Just really briefly, I would just echo everything that councillor Foon has said, but also acknowledge your leadership. You've kind of got exactly the conflict of interest that one would want, in that you are, you know, walking the talk in your own life and it's very inspiring. And I'm just excited about, you know, I was amazed in the Waste Bylaw hearings about all the fantastic, especially young women working in waste minimisation.
Women in waste.
Yeah, and it really is the kind of the way of the future and I'm excited to help support it.
Cool. Is there any debate or discussion? Councillor Paul.
Kia ora, just wanted to thank the team for preparing these applications for us. And yeah, just thank you councillor Foon for all of your mahi and just really wanted to acknowledge the really important role that these solutions play in helping us reach our emissions reduction targets for Te Fanganui atara, for Wellington. So yeah, just wanted to acknowledge you and it's actually really cool because a lot of these initiatives we hear about through you before they actually come to the table, so that's awesome. And I just briefly wanted to totuko what you were just saying about women in waste, which I think is really important because we know that the burden for dealing with waste often and, yeah, exactly, in everyday life, especially in families, falls on women. So yeah, cool, kia ora, just wanted to mahi to you.
Councillor Penet.
Kia ora, great comments everyone. And councillor Foon, as always, thank you for your leadership in this space. So it was last triennium that we got this grant pulled through. It was just, again, part of our little bit where we were trying to make a change. And obviously, it's not enough. So we do want to look quite fundamentally at our waste budgets and hopefully we can get some money from government to do more. But some of these applications are really good. They will make a systemic difference, not just some of those smaller ones which are helpful but won't actually change us to the circular economy. So, look, it's really positive that people are so passionate about this area. We should never talk about waste, of course, no such thing, and that we will be going towards a brighter future. We'll just need to get some more money, councillor Foon, to do even more.
Councillor Day.
Oh, kia ora, what a good koorero we're having here. I just wanted to quickly, obviously, acknowledge councillor Foon for your leadership, both before you were on council and now that you're on council. It's fantastic. But also, just, I was really lucky last triennium to go and open a couple of the Climathon events. And I'm really excited that we're seeing these come to us and such, it's just so professional, you know, what people have come through with and seeing it really meets the community's needs. So it's very much grassroots, community saying where the issues are and how we can improve what we're doing. So it's really exciting to see that Climathon is having that impact on our city and I hope that we can support many more of those things to happen. Kia ora.
Would you like a round of applause, councillor Foon?
I think we've got a good gist of what's happening in waste in Wellington and long may we continue to support it.
All right, I now put the motion. All those in favour, please vote by pressing one. In a minute. Oh, but not eight. We're voting on all of them except eight, sorry. Yep. And then we'll vote on eight separately to deal with the conflict of interest. So that's that one done, that's carried. Thank you. Now we'll vote just with number eight and councillor Foon will move away from the table. It's carried as well, thank you. Now we'll move on to the Building Resilience Fund and I'd like to ask councillor Penet to introduce the report.
Thank you very much. Look, I know there's been some, quite a lot of discussion about this one, but it does actually give me some pleasure to introduce this paper. So thank you to the staff, of course, have done a great job of working with owners to increase the resilience of our city. I said to staff, I left the house slightly grim-faced this morning after seeing the insurance report. We have got a freight train coming at us at a very fast pace, that, you know, we are not going to be able to insure some buildings in the city probably within the next decade and it's going to have very big ramifications. So just as you know, this was former Mayor Leicester and my initiative to really help apartment owners who are facing massive costs to do strengthening. We're not just talking about 250,000. Sometimes it's many hundreds of thousands of dollars for apartments, which are not worth that. And they have done, through Inner City Wellington, a lot of work to convince government that they need some support if they are to meet the standard set under the new earthquake legislation. We also wanted to help NGOs, so for example, like the Royal Port Nicholson Yacht Club that needs to do some strengthening, that was kind of what it was for. So what we've obviously got is some buildings which perhaps now with planning for growth, we wouldn't look at saving. I guess councillor Fitzsimmons is right, is that the public mood has changed, that people want to see some more densification and saving one or two-storey, quite low-quality buildings that don't even have any character value is perhaps not the best use of the money. And so I will be happy and will speak to the amendment that's coming. And saying that though, it does, every building that's strengthened makes our city more resilient to the earthquakes that are inevitable. And I personally don't have any problem with broadening out the criteria with the exception of demolition. If you can demolish it, you can get some money for it too, and hopefully make a profit on it. But certainly, if a building is worthwhile saving, I've got no objection for giving money for geotek or architectural services or quantity surveying. Those are all very, very significant costs. So just in supporting an amendment, I do want to make it clear that I want to do more to help owners of apartment buildings. This is not about walking away from that commitment. We've watched that journey for a very long time. But look, as I say, every building that we just knock off that list is getting us to a point and we know that there will be some owners that are under some financial stress.
Cool. I might just put my amendment now. Can you bring it up? Oh, sorry. Yeah, so we've got a seconda councillor. Paul, were you seconding that? Oh, no. Is there a seconda? Councillor Matthews, thank you. And now can we just bring up the amendment? Cool, thank you. So this, I've got, I'd like to move this amendment. And I just want to start by thanking the staff for doing all the work on this paper because actually by reading this paper, it really brought home to me the urgency of the issue that we're dealing with. And it's clear that the work that's gone into this is very substantial and is actually, does reflect the thrust of what we were trying to achieve when we set up the Building Resilience Fund. So thank you for that work, which has sparked off a sort of a different way of thinking about this, I think. I also want to acknowledge councillor Penet, who's been tireless in seeking to address earthquake-prone buildings in Wellington, even before it was sort of a mainstream idea that there should be more help here. So thank you for the role that you have played. And I think, you know, the Building Heritage Incentive Fund is something that has a real role to play here. I guess what I'm looking for is officers to go away and give us some advice so that we can take it into account in the long-term plan deliberations on issues which reflect the current situation that we're facing in Wellington in a range of ways, particularly around supporting and advocacy services for renters. So I know Renters United asked many of us during the election campaign if we would support better advocacy for renters who face landlords flagrantly acting illegally and they have very little power or ability to redress these problems. And there is a role, I think, for the council to play in providing better advocacy for renters. And I know that the Wellington Community Law Centre already offer this in Lower Hut and they've identified this as an unmet legal need for advocacy. And, you know, you just have to look at Twitter or Facebook any day to see some of the harrowing stories that renters in Wellington are telling about the situation they're facing and the problems with landlords. I also want to look at how we can support building owners facing very complex earthquake-prone requirements. And I guess really what I'm wanting to ask officers to consider is a solution that is commensurate with the problems that Wellington is facing. So I would think about things like, and I know it's been considered in the past, a large-scale at-cost loan scheme to just make sure that all of this work happens. We know that in the next six or seven years, according to this report, we've got 129 of Wellington's 563 earthquake-prone buildings will have their notices expire. So the situation is really urgent and the issues facing the city are very, very important and the challenge is large. And as I say, the timing is urgent. And I guess want to find, yeah, a solution that actually deals with that problem. I think the Building Resilience Fund was a really sensible initiative. It's made a bit, you know, a bit of difference, but actually the scale of the problem is so much bigger than the ability of the fund to fix it. And I think the implemented approach from the council so far has kind of been to start with what we can afford rather than what the scale of the problem is. And I think I want to turn that on its head and say, what is the scale of the problem? Who can we partner with? How can we address it? And kind of move that, move the discussion on. So there's a whole range of options there. We're really just requesting advice from officers for the long-term plan deliberations. Our last councillor Dayo now is going to comment on the Mahi Capital Development Fund. But again, what But again, what we're seeing is the Built Heritage Incentive Fund being oversubscribed and this one perhaps less so. So wanting to bring that into the mix as well in terms of where we go to from here. But obviously, absolutely recognise that we do have criteria at the moment and officers have applied them sensibly and responsibly and, you know, absolutely support the ones on the table today. So yeah, councillor Day is going to second this amendment. Do you want to speak?
All right. Kia ora, thank you very much. And I would like to begin by acknowledging councillor Penne and our past mayor, Justin Leicester, for their leadership on this really challenging kopapa because it is, it's a massive challenge for our city. And I know that you've thought about many ways to be able to support the community, to be able to address this. And I'd like to just quickly acknowledge the staff for working with this fund and trying to make it work the best it could, given the scale of the issues that we're dealing with. But I would also like to thank you councillor Fitzsimons for having a really deep think and a deep dive about how we could maybe increase our level of support through other mechanisms. We do need to be creative with the solutions and a bit like the apartment conversions that have, you know, been underway over the last few years. We do need to look at things which are different because this current system is not really working for so many people. And the insurance conversation is a really important one that our council needs to continue to be involved in. We've made some good inroads at the end of last triennium, but I think, yeah, we need to be a bit more actively involved in that space. So I will speak, obviously, I support all of the various aspects in this, but I will just speak to the establishment of a Maori Capital Development Fund. And this has really come out with conversations that I've had with councillor Paul and others around the fact that we've given a lot of money to, in the city, to churches and to other organisations to strengthen their buildings. But what it leads you to is to reflect that when we come to Maori infrastructure, we don't have a lot to put money into. We do have some and I'll mention some of those, but we have to be able to create, I guess, some sort of funds that allows mana finua and other Maori organisations to be able to look at actually how we can acknowledge our Maori heritage. Some of the places may not exist yet, but when we look at the whakapapa and hauamarai, for example, is created, that actually with the carvings, it is acknowledging the heritage of a group of people. And so heritage can have a contemporary expression. So I'd like to be able to see, us be able to support that and be very deliberate in the way that we support our Maori heritage and our future. And I can think already of a number of sites and groups who will, I imagine, be quite excited to see a fund like this created. I think of like Ngahoefaa Papararangi, which had to work incredibly hard just to fix up their toilets. Their faripaku were, you know, really in a dire need of being worked on. But also that there's many more opportunities on that site for that whanau to be able to improve the offering that they can give to the community through improving their premises. Then we've got Tapu Turanga, who's trying to emerge from the ashes. What can we do around supporting that? I think that's an obvious one that we could be giving a decent amount of money to. We've got Tiaro Pa, which is obviously a huge tanga for the city and what can we do as a council to really, to really support that and to join that with Tiaro Pa work that's happening. And I think that's something we have to be willing to put some money into. Then we have opportunities like Tawa College and Tawa Community are wanting to create a marae. There's a kindergarten which they would like to repurpose for the community. That would be an amazing opportunity to be able to acknowledge some Maori heritage in Tawa as well. So I think there's heaps of opportunity. The challenge is going to be making the fund big enough that we can really have impact. So I look forward to working with staff to, and councillor Paul and others, to create something that's really special and takes our city into an exciting future. So kia ora.
Thank you. Councillor Matthews.
Kia ora, kato. First of all, I'd like to thank officers and councillors for their work on this fund and the things that have been achieved by it so far. I guess I, you know, was having the concern as I kind of looked at some of the work that we were doing, that we may be undermining our objectives in other areas by supporting, strengthening some smaller dwellings that didn't, weren't meeting housing needs particularly, but also are not our, you know, are not heritage. And despite some people might believe to the contrary, I think we do want to support heritage, actual heritage. And so that is a distinction, you know, than, you know, just everything because it's older that we actually do our bit to support those, you know, the strengthening of those buildings that do represent that kind of quality and history of our city. I, I guess, I also wanted to talk about the advocacy service for renters. You know, I was actually, I'm very excited that I get to talk about housing at Grants. That someone, someone was asking me for coffee the other week and they said they would even let me talk about housing. So I know I'm boring, but, you know, we see, councillor Paul and I were having a talk in the break about all the people that we don't see as councillors who don't have the resources to come and see us and advocate on their behalf. But they do post photos of their rooms to rent on vic deals. And so, you know, we've seen increasingly people living in situations that are not only unhealthy and unsafe, but are probably illegal. But because of the nature of our rental market, the lack of supply that we have, the lack of rights that renters have, it's too much of an ask for an individual to go and seek the improvements that are needed to their rental accommodation. And so I'm really, you know, I think, very excited to be able to show Wellingtonians that we are seeing them and hearing them and wanting to take action to address the real issues they face. And thank you very much for your work on that, councillor Fitzsimons. I think it's great. And I also just want to totoku councillor Day in terms of, you know, we've also been talking a lot about whose heritage and that how little we have of, you know, mana finua built heritage is the fact that it hasn't been important over the years, that we have always prioritised colonial heritage and that if we don't put money in now, we won't have that heritage in the future and actually being able to support the protection of the heritage of mana finua buildings in our city. It's exciting. Thank you.
Cool. Anyone else? Yeah, councillor Penne.
Look, councillor Fitzsimons, I'd like to start by thanking you first that local government has tended to think small because we've kind of gone, this is how much money we've got. And actually, infrastructure, we just need to spend a lot of money and not just us, obviously, our partners as well. So I think that's really helpful. Look, happy to support the advocacy service for renters, looking at those issues, but as I, I just, just do want to highlight that I think we need to be just careful not to get into areas that central government should be funding because we've got so many needs just within our own space. But thank you councillor Fitzsimons for just showing what the hut's doing in that space. I like the fact that we're looking at complex earthquake prone requirements rather than just one party wall or whatever. I think that will meet some of my concerns around people who've got really massive bills. Of course, I would always support increased funding for the Built Heritage Incentive Fund, but hopefully there will be an increase in funding through that anyway. And then that can, if there is extra money, depending on where we go, it can go to the Maori Capital Development Fund potentially. That might be a better place. And just lastly on the, I really strongly support that. So definitely felt challenged by the Black Lives Matter protests that we had and just thinking about how we do tell our history. And so it's been good to see councillor Day and Paul leading on this and seeing how we can give some equity in the heritage space to Maori heritage, past, current and future. We have done some stuff to highlight Maori heritage. It's not true that we haven't done anything, but we haven't done enough and we haven't put it on an equal footing. And so I would hope that this is really the beginning through this next long term plan of being able to do that, you know, actually putting hard cash on the table is a meaningful way to realise our treaty obligations and responsibilities. So I think this is a good thing. The officers are obviously soon going off on leave. This is slightly difficult time to be asking for work, but I'm sure we can get something done by March. And there actually has been quite a lot of thinking done and other cities have done things in the space anyway. So hopefully we can just draw on that rather than doing a whole lot of new work. Kia ora.
Councillor Paul.
Kia ora. Thanks, councillor Fitzsimons. This is a really awesome amendment and I really support all parts of it. And I just wanted to respond to my colleagues, some of your points, because I think they are quite interesting. I think, you know, just your koorero about, you know, we've got to be, I guess, cognisant of what central government's roles are in advocating for renters and what our role is. But from what I can see from the Built Resilience Fund for non heritage building, you know, we do actually do a lot of advocacy for homeowners. And actually, our public participation, as we've seen over the last few months, is very heavily weighted towards the interests and perspectives of homeowners. And so I think we've got a long way to go in the sense of actually being able to advocate for renters to the same extent to which we do that for homeowners. So I think that's really important, considering probably too that a majority of Wellingtonians are probably also renters. And I do hope that funding from the Built Heritage Incentive Fund does spill over into the Maori Capital Development Fund. And I want to thank you councillor Day for all of your work that you've done and to Karipa and others within the organisation who have been putting a lot of fikaro into that capital development fund. And I just wanted to raise, going back to that central government point, that last year, in 2019, $38.5 million was spent on cultural heritage by central government and only 2% of that spend was on Maori land based heritage. And that really, I think, highlights that across the spectrum from central to local government funding, that all of the funding for heritage is, you know, disproportionately weighted in favour of colonial heritage. And just because you mentioned Black Lives Matter as well, I just really want to emphasise that that's not the same as indigenous rights. However, there was a really good article put out yesterday on RNE News about Black New Zealanders and how, they talked a lot about how black culture within New Zealand is within its infancy and how they hope to have spaces and places where they can continue to develop that. But what I'm afraid of is that with all of the emphasis that we put on colonial heritage and all the energy we put into protecting that, that we stop ourselves from being able to facilitate, nurture and support new culture and a new multicultural, diverse aotearoa. So just wanted to bring those perspectives to the table.
Cool. Well, thanks everyone. Just very briefly, just, I absolutely accept that, you know, central government have a role to play here. What I would say about an organisation like the Community Law Centre is that it's much more powerful having an advocate who's supervised by a lawyer advocating for you compared with what the government scheme that's set up. And in just in terms, councillor Penne, of the point you raised around work, in terms of bullet point one, support and advocacy service for renters, Jenny Reins is already off the mark and basically, I think, it feels like, to be honest, it's almost done. And in terms of the increased funding available to the Built Heritage Incentive Fund, I don't think Lindsay will have very much problem in saying that can, yeah, that can happen and here's what we could do with it. And I know that Liam has already investigated and with Karipa, issues around a Maori Capital Development Fund. So in terms of work, I think the bulk of it will be really in relation to the Built Heritage, the Building Resilience Fund and that work supporting building owners facing complex earthquake prone requirements. And it's clear there will need to be some partnering with government on that or some, at least work with them. And I know that a lot of policy work's been done, not only in this paper, but prior to today by the council. So I don't anticipate that the officer work or the advice that's provided will be too difficult. It's really what the political will for both here and down the road. So, yeah, thanks. It's carried. Thank you. Now back to the substantive. Does anyone want to speak on that? Okay, we'll put that, it's been moved and seconded as amended. It's carried too. Thanks, everybody. Now, the next paper is the Built Heritage Incentive Fund and I'll ask councillor Penne to introduce that.
Thank you. I hope this is really fast. Again, look, I'd just like to thank staff for the work that they've put in. If you look at those statistics about the numbers of heritage buildings which are coming off our earthquake prone building list, that's excellent work. Obviously, there's a number still to engage with us, but people are getting on and doing the work and it's fantastic. This is obviously for listed buildings and I am hoping that more money will come through for other projects so that we can really take a precinct approach. This isn't just about heritage, it's also about life safety. We obviously lost a number of people in the tragic Christchurch earthquakes and we do not want that repeated in Wellington. And of course, councillor Paul, the point is taken that there does need to be some equity with Maori, with other cultures and Maori first, and we will definitely do that work. I think that that challenge is well heard and our new heritage strategy will reflect that. So we've got some work still to get that done, but that will happen. So thank you very much and pleased to support these.
Thank you. And I think councillor Day is seconding that. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, well, just very, very briefly, I just want to thank the staff because I know this is like a lot of work. You read through the paper and the depth of detail is just impressive. In fact, so much so that I started researching the Ivy, oh, what's it called? It was Nott House, the one in Glen Side, which I drive past quite frequently. And the Nott House.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
And the history behind it is amazing and crazy. And it will be exciting to see it sort of come to life again. I do remember as a younger person living in the area, some of the stories about the character that lived there and the things that he did. So it's quite interesting doing some research. But one of the things that was interesting, and this feeds in again to our history, is that in some of the places, it's recorded as being the oldest, one of the oldest houses in Wellington. And I thought, oh, this is interesting, isn't it? Because there were many houses before then that we don't have now. So it does again feed back into this, our narrative of what an old home is and who it belongs to. So, but yeah, I really do support the work that's gone in here and that we are looking after those very, very special places that do tell a history of often what has been quite hard times for people. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody. And thank you councillor Penne for your leadership on heritage in this area. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Was there any debate? No? All right, I'll put the motion then. Press one if you're in favour and two against. Lovely, it's carried. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the Arts and Culture Fund and I'll ask councillor Matthews to introduce the report.
This is like the best committee. It's nearly, it's got its rigs, this committee. Yeah. Kia ora, kato. Just there is, tonight, there is one change to the amounts that we agreed with officers and with members of the committee to fund the Trades Hall exhibition to mark the 40th anniversary of the Springbok Tour to the full $4,000. Another thing I never thought I would get to say at Grants Committee, but solidarity forever, that these were, you know, important, the Battle of Molesworth Street, you know, such an important moment in our history too. And that it's great to be able to, but it's a small amount. But this fund, there's a lot of other exciting things in this fund. I'd like to thank officers for their work in particular. 27 projects, over $170,000. And, you know, that it just covers, you know, music, film, dance, theatre, comedy, visual arts, including photography and sculpture. So it's, you know, again, we would love to support everybody and everything, but it's a great mix of arts and culture across the city. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. And councillor Paul, is seconding? Would you like to speak? Anyone else? Oh, yep, councillor Phone. Oh, that's right.
I'll just forward it through to you again. I may have sent it to Shaun Rush by mistake. No, I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, we'll just adjourn for a couple of minutes.
We're just adjourned for a couple of minutes. I'll put the motion that's been moved and seconded. All those in favour, press one. Good work, team. All right. Next one is the Social and Recreation Fund and I'd like to invite councillor Day to introduce the report.
Kia ora no koutou. I think councillor Matthews, that this has to be the best committee because we are giving money to organisations who do amazing mahi. And that's probably the biggest thing I want to do is to acknowledge the submitters that came in today and that all of the organisations are doing amazing, amazing mahi. And it is hard because we can't give money to everybody because there is just so much need. But, and I'd like to thank Mark and the team for wrangling with that challenge because there is certainly a lot to try and fit in and make work. And also acknowledge that we have a bubble of money, which sort of creates sometimes an unrealistic situation for us, that it won't necessarily be able to continue that way for all the organisations that we can give funding to now. So next year, we may find it a bit more challenging as that fund dwindles and we want to keep giving and the need is still there. So I guess it's just important that, you know, organisations know that we want to give as best we can and as effectively as we can, but that it does change and come and go. Just a couple to comment on, I'm really excited to see the Kai Cycle application and the amazing work that they're doing and the fact that they are overrun with people who are really keen to learn and interact with them, which is just fantastic. So it's good that we can give some serious financial support there. And to also thank Mark and the team for making the Linden Mural Project work and to transferring some of that into this fund and then working with the artists to work out how we work through that ko'apapa. But I know that the community will really appreciate it just being out there on Saturday with Ngati Tua through Tiahuru Morua there, housing arm, which is just new. And really looking around the area as we were standing there thinking, we do need to put a lot of love into the physical environment in Linden because it hasn't had much love on the physical environment side for a long, long time. So, yeah, it's really important we do that. The other thing, there was another one that was also transferred across, I see, the Outer Spaces Charitable Trust, which is great. Thank you for, you know, being creative and flexible with the way that we manage those situations because often people are coming to apply for money and they don't always know how to make it work and how to work with the sort of intricacies of council systems. So it's important that we do continue to support people through that process. The other one that we do have an amendment for, we've got two actually. So we've got the Regenerate Charitable Trust. It's changed, we've just corrected the name and also there's a little bit of a point there which you might just want to read, which is about making sure that we've got some security of knowledge of how the processes are working, just so that we're following good process. It's important that we're consistent. The other one is the amendment to St Vincent de Paul Society through the RISO. So whilst, you know, overall the society is managing everything very well, they have had to redirect some of their funding to make sure that the food bank is operating at its best for people, which means unfortunately, things like RISO sometimes have to sort of say, okay, we're not going to stop people from having food, but we don't want that RISO to come to an abrupt halt at the end of this year because it is providing some pretty significant support for people who are trying to find a pathway through a difficult time. So we have had a chat and made sure that, you know, we're aware that this funding may not be able to continue at this level next year, but this is an opportunity to be able to find the way through for now. So very happy to move all of those and, do I have a second? I'm sure I have a second, councillor Matthews.
Thank you. Councillor Matthews, you want any other debate? Oh, councillor, oh, you've got an amendment. Sorry, this time. Okay. Excellent. Councillor Phone.
Kia ora, yes. And look, I had the pleasure of being able to visit Christchurch over the weekend to observe their compost collection or their organic food collection, the systems that work. And as part of that, we went to visit Cultivate Christchurch, which is possibly in the same family as Kai Cycle. And when I spoke to the founder of that, she made it really clear. I said, as councils, what can we do to support? And she said, the funding or the sustainability of the funding is critical. And what has led to them to being nearly fully sustainable financially was that they were able to strategise to get all funders in the room, council, including government, including all the other people. Because without that understanding of planning, it wouldn't have been possible for them to really go forward. And as we know, that, you know, as we saw over COVID, that food sustainability is just so critical and food security, and we know, it's like, it's so hard to make this work. We've got so many barriers in the way. We've got resource consents every time they want to set up a compost station. We've got policy around our green spaces. So actually, there's no space for Kai Cycle to get another garden, otherwise they would have had it by now. So they're really up against it. But yet they persist where most of us would probably give in. And I think just having that, some kind of idea of what the future looks like for them are very important. So this is just asking our team to take a fresh look at it with that in mind. So yes, I would love a second. Thank you councillor Penner. And yeah, the team are very happy to pursue this. And probably a good time to bring up, we are looking at bringing a sustainable food plan for Wellington as part of the long-term plan. That is what we're working towards. So this is a good place to start bringing that to our table.
Right. Councillor Penner, did you want to speak? No? Cool. All right. We'll put the amendment. All those in favour, press one. That's carried. And now the substantive. Does anyone wish to speak to that? No? All right. It's been moved and seconded. Oh, councillor Phone.
Probably just want to acknowledge, thank you team for all reviewing the Vaneeze project. And I think the visit that we had to Vincent St Paul's really highlighted just the work that they are doing for the community, the increased need in the community. And just more recently, I've really, it really has hit me, that overwhelming feeling that there is so much need out there and so little money available. And actually, it's, as you know, I'm always the optimist, but it's really not started yet. So we're going to see more. And I'm just thankful for organisations like Kai Bosch that are strategically planning, accepting that there will be more need. So, yeah, so just thank you for supporting that today. And yeah, just acknowledging we've probably got more mahi to do in this space coming up next year. Kia ora.
Cool. Thank you. All right. I'll now put the motion that's been moved and seconded. Please press one if you support it. And it's carried. All right. Well done, everybody. We made it. Itu iti karakia.